All right, you're on. And we're at one minute to go, and you are live. Hello, hello.
Hi there.
Hello.
Good, how's it going?
Good, thanks for coming on down.
Have you got Lisa there too? Oh, wonderful. Well, the three of you will make a quorum whenever you want to get going. Josh, I think we are still expecting. I think Shannon said that she would be here tonight.
I didn't hear any kind of.
Yeah, it's her son's birthday, but I think she she said she was planning on it.
Yeah. Give it until it hits seven, so we're almost there. And it's seven. Hello, everybody out there in TV world. This is our January Planning Commission meeting. To start off, I'd like a roll call, please.
Oh, sure. Let's see, we'll go down the order on the agenda there. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Caltabiano?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Here.
And we are still waiting on Ms. Strasner, but you do have a quorum.
All right. With that quorum, if you could take a second to look at your agenda and if there are no additions or amendments?
As an addition, I would like to. Hopefully, my partner will join us on Zoom, but we have an application for an Airbnb unit in town.
Okay.
So I have half the application here. Matt, I was supposed to email you, but it was just been the last 15 minutes or so.
I do have that.
Okay, excellent. So I'd like to add this to the agenda.
What's the address?
691 Harrison Street.
Okay. And what's the application for?
For converting one of the rental units as a duplex, converting one of the units into an Airbnb.
Okay, special use permit transient lodgings?
Correct.
Okay. So that would be 6A new business? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to the revised agenda would be in order.
Yeah. Do I have a motion for the amendment to the agenda and adoption of agenda?
Sure, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and add a new special use permit for 691 Harrison Street and transient lodging.
Do I have a second?
Am I allowed to? Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So with the agenda set, we will go to number two, the review and approval of meeting minutes. And this is regarding back in December. Has everybody had a moment to review them?
Yes.
Yes.
I reviewed them, and I make a motion that we approve, accept and approve these minutes.
All right.
Thank you so much for reading them, you guys. I really didn't mean that.
Lindsay, do we have a second?
I second, yes, please.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no one's to oppose. All right, so the minutes have been approved. Now we'll move to number three, report on any actions from Town Council. Do you have anything relevant to us?
Yes, well, I will say my my appointment to Town Council came at a very perfect timing because everything that we've been working on for Planning Commission, the small area plan, the the what else am I missing? I know there are a number of other things. Well, it all came about in Town Council this during our last meeting, which was two weeks ago. And I'm happy to report that that Town Council approved this small area plan. And I don't know why I'm just I'm blanking on the other thing that we were talking about in our last meeting. I don't have my notes with me.
The Tiger Fuel SUV, I believe.
Yeah, Tiger Fuel. How could I forget? So both both the items have passed through Town Council.
Okay.
Hello, Ms. Strasner.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you here. Could we could we show our full membership here at four minutes after seven?
I have got it in the minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with nothing further to report, we'll move to number four, which is matters from the public. Is there anyone that would like to say anything that is not currently on the agenda?
Ms. Lambert, we have the vacancy on Planning Commission down at the end of our agenda. Would you like to introduce yourself and say hello now?
Sure, hi, I'm Sherri Lambert, and my husband Rob and I moved to Scottsville in the summer, so I think we took possession of our home, which is 620 Harrison, August 5th. And so we're really enjoying the community, we're enjoying getting to know the area. We moved from Bend, Oregon, so it is completely different for us, but we have lovely neighbors and just are really enjoying the time here. So I'm looking forward to getting involved and serving both Rob and I, and so that's why I'm approaching the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak or move on? All right, so we'll go ahead and move to number five, which is our public hearing. This is a special use permit for 430 Valley Street. And it will be for having a mixed use of residential and commercial space. Matt, would you like to?
That would be me.
All right.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much for for joining us, Ms. Rayer. I can I can introduce the matter briefly and set up for the public hearing. The the property is 430 Valley Street, currently zoned commercial. It's a mixed-use building in the historic district. This is one of the storefront spaces fronting Valley Street. It's previously had a couple of different retail businesses in it with other apartments in the building for many years. The the request is for a mixed-use conversion to allow a ground floor apartment in the space fronting Valley Street with permissions to also operate a home occupation business there. The conversion of ground floor space in the commercial district requires a special use permit, so that's a matter to consider before us. I'll send that back to you for the public answer.
All right, do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? No comment, I will close the public here. So we will now move to 6A, which Lisa, this is the application you brought with us tonight? What's that? Oh, you don't have to vote on it if you just like to say it for us. Oh, so that will go, we'll vote on that down at seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Steven Passapulo, are you ready to speak?
We see him online, and I did get your comments.
What do you need me to do?
There he is.
Well, I need a little quick introduction, but this is just to add you to the agenda, now you're on the agenda, so this is your opportunity to talk about your application. And I'll present a check and the hard copy of the application here.
Yeah, we're just looking for the special use permit to do the tourist lodging for 691 Harrison Street.
You, I did get your written statement a few minutes before the meeting. Would you like me to read that into the record? Because it hasn't gone to the rest of Planning Commission yet. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
This is from Mr. Passapulo, excuse my pronunciation. We are requesting the Town of Scottsville grant approval for a special use permit to allow tourist lodging use of 691 Harrison Street. It is a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment that is the bottom floor of a duplex. The top floor is currently rented to a local long-term tenant. We are capping the max occupancy of the Airbnb to six people. The private driveway provides one parking spot to the long-term tenant, and there is ample street parking in front of the unit for the Airbnb. The owner, Lisa Caltabiano, is a licensed Realtor and has been in the property management industry for over 17 years. She currently works for a local property management firm in Charlottesville. Together with her partner, Steven Passapulo, they have refurbished this unit with high-end furnishings and look forward to providing lodging to out-of-town tourists and visiting family members of Scottsvilleans. Its location being convenient to the downtown area will provide access for our guests to contribute to the local economy by dining, shopping, and purchasing services from local companies like James River Runnings. Steven and Lisa love all Scottsville has to offer and are dedicated to giving others not only a place to stay, but an unforgettable small-town experience that brings them back again and again. That's the written statement. The application is for transient lodgings conversion in downtown residential zone that requires a special use permit. I've not had time to complete any staff analysis, unless at this point, it's just coming into us as new business. If you wanted to go ahead and set a date next month for public hearing and action, that would certainly be in order, or you could speak with the applicant team here at this point.
Planning Commission, what is your, what are your thoughts? And how would you feel about having a public hearing set for next month? Or would you like to have further discussion?
Is that for me?
Well, I do have a quick question. I'm just curious, because in the application, the main floor of the building is reserved for a local rental, non-transient lodging rental. Is that correct?
The upper, the upper floor. The the bottom is going to be the Airbnb.
The upper floor. So I guess my question is, in granting the special use permit, and this is more for Matt Thomas, is the in granting the the transient lodging special use permit for the bottom floor, does that convey to the entire building or just to the the bottom floor that's being requested at this time?
That's a good question. And Town Council got into the same matter with the Valley Street property, similar application last month. Town Council and Planning Commission are able to restrict those permissions to part of the building. So if the if the application, excuse me, is only for one part of it, that should be clear in the application, because the the town may grant the use to all or part of the building. This application is only for the one half of it, correct?
Yeah, and I believe they're addressed separately, like physical mailing addresses.
Okay.
And well.
That certainly helps to be.
Yeah, I mean, because obviously, this is a this is something that we've we've discussed a little bit recently, and I know that it's favored by most of us in Planning Commission, and it went over favorably in Town Council as well. You know, the one thing I do just want to be cautious about is ensuring that we retain rental properties for people who want to rent long-term and are not solely, you know, passing through town, and that we have, we make sure to maintain some rental properties throughout Scottsville. So just one thing to consider as we likely see these requests more and more.
All right, thank you. So then I will ask, would you like to have any further discussion, or do you feel this is something you would like to put on the agenda for next month to vote on?
I mean, I'm happy to vote on it. Shannon, do you have any thoughts on your end?
I I'm a little concerned, and this this doesn't really have anything to do so much with the, I'm fine with an Airbnb. That particular street, the parking isn't ample, I would say, and when people park on that side of the street, it, I don't know if there's been any talk about making that street maybe a one-way, because it blocks traffic flow significantly, to the point where if somebody's coming up that hill very quickly, you have to get over, like there isn't room for two, two vehicles to pass there when all of the cars from those residents are parked along that street. So that's my concern. I'm I'm not concerned about the Airbnb so much, like I said, but the parking and the flow of traffic is a concern on that street for me, just in that particular section.
Well, and I think especially, there was just an incident with with two-part cars there as well, who maintained some some damage from someone driving along that street who had dropped their phone.
Oh, that's what happened. I was wondering. Yeah.
Well, one thing I would say about the parking situation is we do have the one spot for the long-term tenant, and previous tenants in the downstairs unit had three cars. I do, and they need work. We could also block the driveway. We could switch it to have that the Airbnb spot and block the driveway if they have a second car. Um, so I don't think it, I don't really think that that's going to be a problem considering I don't have three cars at the Airbnb very frequently. But we do have the right to use the church parking lot across the street off of that. Of course, there is free parking.
Great.
So I think it should be okay.
And I have ring footage that shows in front of the house, I mean, all this month has been vacant continuously. And that's a good three space.
Okay.
That's interesting detail for half now. I haven't seen that in these matters before, but the video footage of the property is becoming more common. Thank you for mentioning that.
Do we have a motion to call a public hearing?
Sure, I'll make a motion to call a public hearing for the special use permit at six, I'm sorry, what is the address? 691, 691 Harrison Street.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three zero. We will now move down to seven eight, which is old business, the special use permit of 430 Valley Street. Planning Commissioners, do you feel comfortable voting on this?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Any motions to approve, suspend a special use permit for 430 Valley Street to Town Council for final approval?
All in favor? Or sorry, second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I, sorry, can I take a roll vote on that one, actually, Josh?
Oh, yeah. Just go ahead and.
Thank you, sorry. Let's see, and I'm just, Shannon, did you have the second on that?
I did.
Oh, Lindsay did, okay, thank you very much, Lindsay. Okay. Let's see, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Caltabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Peck? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Strasner.
Yes.
Thank you very much, the motion carries.
All right. So thank you for our viewers. We've got one more piece of business. This will be the seven B, which is filling our vacancy. Matt, do we have any potential candidates?
We we do. If I could back up real briefly and and thank Ms. Rayer for attending, it sounds like there are there are no questions, so I will carry this forward to Town Council. They will have this same process of special hearing and discussion coming up in the next month, so I'll keep in touch with you about that, but there there may be a little more discussion at the Town Council level. Was there anything that you wanted to say for the record here now?
No, thank you very much, and happy new year.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Thank you.
On the Planning Commission vacancy, this is the the seat made vacant by Ms. Brown's appointment to Town Council. We we posted that that call out, and I sent out as many requests as I could think of to active residents in town who might be interested here, including members of the Special Planning Committee that worked on the Small Area Plan and folks who have had recent business before Town Council, Planning Commission, or Architectural Review Board. And Ms. Lambert applied in that last category. As a new homeowner, she had a package come through with the Architectural Review Board, and and the ARB was happy to work with her recently there, and so she has applied as a a new resident on Harrison Street with interest in serving in the Planning Commission.
With that being said, let's see, so for appointments, we make recommendation to Council for adoption. Who said it's, Ms. Lambert, is here with us?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Planning Commissioners, would you like to make a motion? Would you like time to think about it and extend interviews? How would you like to go?
To be honest, I think half of what she said, it was very quiet, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, and I had our volume all the way up here. Ms. Lambert, would you mind saying a little bit more about your yourself and your background, maybe a little bit closer to your microphone? I don't think I can make you any louder here.
Okay, let me make sure I have it turned up. That's maximum, I'm blowing your ears out, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, my husband Rob and I, we moved from Bend, Oregon, to Scottsville in the summer and took possession of the house August 5th. Since living in Scottsville, we really love this community, fell in love with it almost immediately. We have amazing neighbors and really just enjoy the whole community feel of the area and just think it's amazing and has great potential, especially with the levy, for growth and creating a community that really serves and enriches the lives of the people that live here now and also in the future. And as far as my background, I've had almost 40 years in business. I've been a small business owner, successful small business owner. I've also spent 20 years in nonprofits and another, you know, five, seven, 10 years in for-profit business. I worked with the United States Government as a liaison. I built businesses, I enhanced businesses, I worked with Small Business Administration, I've applied for grants, I worked on funding of all varieties of government levels. I've invested in real estate for probably 35 years, and this is our 26th home between Rob and I, and we've owned homes here and abroad. And I've also worked on commercial residential properties and commercial properties as well and zoning on those. So I do have an extensive background in business, long-term, short-term planning, that kind of thing, and analysis. And I was at the VP level of operations, so for most of my career. So that's kind of my background, besides I just love this community and want to serve.
Well, welcome to Scottsville.
Thank you. We feel welcome.
Good.
We do, even in the middle of a pandemic, I mean, I figure that's something.
Well, I'm happy to make the motion to to carry Ms. Lambert's application to Town Council.
And I will second it.
Thank you. That one you can do by voice, Josh.
Oh, tough.
Oh, but he's on mute, sorry there.
Sorry, try it again. Do you need a roll call, Thomas?
No, sir, you can do that one by consent.
Okay, if there is no discussion, can, so we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero, so that's a recommendation to Council for approval. That is all that I have for you, everyone. Is there, before any adjournments, is there anything else to bring about?
Could I tee up a little bit of next month?
Sure.
We, uh, Town Council was happy to act on the Small Area Plan last last month, and the the only final revision that they made in adoption was increasing the urgency of the zoning updates matter. They expressed that as a high priority, and we had a table of of timing of some actions in the Small Area Plan, and and Council moved the zoning updates matter to the most urgent category. And several Council members said they they hoped to act on that in short order. That lines up with what Planning Commission was expressing back in December to make a new look at the at the zoning ordinance, a high priority in this year. So I've I've started to list those action items, and there's a there's a fair number of them. Some easy, just updating a definition or fixing a contradiction where the ordinance says two different things in two places, and we just need to pick which one we want to use. Others of them are a lot more complicated, like going through our uses in commercial and thinking which ones do we want to be by right and which ones we want to be by SUV. What do you want to make easy to do? What do you want to make hard to do? The Small Area Plan mentions a new Scottsville-specific planned unit development district, and creating that from whole cloth is going to take a while. So as I as I put all of this prep work together, it would help a little bit to know about the Commission's priorities. What pieces of this do you want to take on first? Or how many of these matters, the little ones and the big ones, do you want to be dealing with at one time? Because I I worry that if if I bring you 15 zoning action items, it's it's going to be too much to deal with at once.
Okay. Planning Commission, would you like to do some of the small line actions first as with us having newer members and this being something that we haven't discussed as a group before? We can kind of ease into it and then start going at the full lines of text, because doing the small discrepancies is significantly, it's more piecemeal rather than having to look at full sections, which is what we did a year, two years ago. It'll be a good way to get our feet wet. And I mean, for myself, I know I'll need to have a little bit of a refreshers, it's been quite a while. How does everybody feel about that? How does everybody feel about that?
Yeah. I think it's a good to get our feet wet, thanks Lindsay. And then, you know, perhaps having a couple on each agenda. See how the first couple of rounds go and how fast we're getting through them.
Sure.
Lindsay, Shannon, is that, sound okay to go?
Yeah, I definitely agree with that. I mean, let's, let's try and feel a little like we're making a little progress by bringing some of those smaller items and, and, and starting small while also keeping the bigger picture in mind, since we all have to, to deal with the small area plan zoning as well. But I think we need to be really cautious, cautious there as well. So just it would be good to, to take a little piece of.
Shannon, any comments for us?
I agree with that approach, doing it a little bit at a time, tackling the smaller ones first.
Awesome. I believe that'll line up pretty well as we have our public, another public hearing next month. So it'll be able to just kind of ease into it and we can kind of assess how it goes and, yeah.
Is there a way you could put together all of the action items that need to be addressed? And then choose which ones to tackle first or or do you want to make the executive decision on one?
Absolutely, I can, I can give you a, a tracker of here's all the issues that I'm aware of. And as we start to pick away on those, you can kind of set priorities and, and space out those agendas. Because it, so it's not too much on any one meeting. And it, I don't know that it's really fair to the public to invite a public hearing on 10 different things. And people come about one thing and they lose track about the other thing. That, that almost feels less honest.
Yeah.
Keep, keep the spotlight where it belongs.
Wait, I'm sorry, we have to have a public hearing, but we're done with all the papers?
Yeah, any, any change to the zoning ordinance requires that public hearing and vote. You can bundle those items together and say, you know, we're doing a public hearing on changes for the zoning ordinance. And here are six different things that are changing. I, I worry that that becomes a little bit disingenuous as you put too many things together all at once. So part of that smell test is, in fairness, how much should be given to the public at one time? You know? But that's, that's up to you.
Has there been any interest in that, in that property? Like, do you have, have this done by a certain date?
That was pretty fuzzy, say again, please.
Oh, sorry, I was just wondering if there's been any interest in the property? And I'm wondering that, because I'm wondering if we need to have some of these action items done by a certain date to accommodate that.
Um, yes, there's, there's interest. The, the newspaper coverage about the small area plan prompted some, some phone calls back here about, okay, what is that? What does that mean for investors? We don't have any, you know, blueprints or concepts or applications in yet. But I think it's an encouraging sign to, on the economic development side, to see us taking these matters on. If I hear anything about specific requests or ideas that an investor has related to zoning, I would encourage them to come to our meetings, take a look at what we're doing and maybe share their thoughts about what might work for them. But I don't have that yet.
I, I would also add to that, sometime in the next few months, you guys will begin that site plan process with Tiger Fuel, which though not necessarily rezoning is the first big new construction we've done. And that will touch on some zoning regulations, like the light ordinance and some of that stuff that you guys have talked about, maybe wanting to dust off and look at, so something else to consider there.
That's true, and that's a good introduction for the kind of step by step in this development process. That in the example of Tiger Fuels, their special use permit passed. But they also come back through with their site plan and they run that through this body and town council to confirm that their final design meets all of our regulations. So there were a few questions that town council had about, say, sidewalks or landscaping or light fixtures, which weren't germane to the special use permit, but do need to be looked at during the site plan review. So we, we get two cracks at it in that way and lets us look at these properties more closely. So that'll be up on agenda as well. Not sure how long it's going to take them to draw their site plan, but look for that in the springtime perhaps.
Hey, I do have one quick question. I guess when we were going through the revision of the small area plan, there had been some mention that the board that Stuart Murdoch is on with the county that there had mentioned, is, is that one of the pieces of interest? Or, or is that something that's still relevant to, to the small area plan in the factory site?
I don't follow.
What was that?
I don't follow, sorry.
Wait, wasn't Stuart talking about some like some, some, some county projects that had interest in the factory site? That there was some like initial rumblings about, but it had some sort of secret code name? And he was unable to give us any information about it. Did anything to pass on that?
Yeah, um, town council member Stuart Munson is also a member of the county's economic development authority. The fire plant building is on the county's list of large industrial assets. So when a company is interested in a big industrial building, the county helps send them our way and take tours of the building. So that happened back a couple of months ago and they, they give them secretive code names and don't publish a lot of details about what the company is doing. That did not lead to anything. And let's see. I later saw other announcements in the same industry that showed that business going other places. So it was one where the Scottsville property was not what they were looking for. I, I don't think I can say what kind of business it was.
Hardly done.
Yeah. But, so that, that kind of traffic will continue to happen. And as long as the building is zoned for heavy industry, the county will keep it on their list and send the prospective businesses our way.
I see, okay, cool.
All right, does anyone have anything else they would like to discuss? If not, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. I will make the motion.
Thank you, Shannon.
Lindsay, would you like the second to that?
Bad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes, we adjourn, thank you. So you guys, our next meeting shall be on February 1st, all right?
Thank you all very much. Shannon, say happy birthday to Bright for us.
Grant's birthday.
Oh, is it Grant? Oh, I thought it was Bright first, I thought he was closest after Charlie.
No, 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 Bright's, Bright's is tonight and Grant's is the first of February, so.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Both kids' birthdays on the meeting nights.
Oh, fun. Well, it'll what be seven or eight years before that could possibly happen again.
That's right.
All right, good night, everybody.